Okay. We're getting ready to call the Tuesday, January 8th Andover City Council meeting to order. We'll start off with the roll call to my left, please.
Brian Schwann, council member.
Caroline Hale, council member.
Troy Taber, council member.
Ben Lawrence, mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Warrington, council member.
Mike Keller, police chief.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Chad Russell, fire chief.
Jennifer McCoslin, assistant city administrator.
Paula Bab, deputy city clerk.
Susan Rooney, city clerk.
Mark Deter, city administrator. Please let the record note, our city attorney is on his way, he got stuck in traffic. Move on to item number three. This evening we have Pastor John Langley, thank you with East Point Church of Christ, to give our invocation.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, I come before your throne to praise you in all of your glory. You are the God of all gods and you are sovereign and holy. Blessed be your name. Today I ask for your presence in this, the midst of this business at hand. Please bless those who have come forward to lead our community. And father, I pray that your hand will be on them to fulfill their duties faithfully to the city of Andover. Please be with them and help them to be diligent and honest in their, in their work. And help them to find perfection in their performance. Father, may you bless each one with strength and courage to lead. And we ask you for these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you would stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five is the public forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll move on to item number six, which is the acceptance of the agenda. Any additional items this evening?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing we did was updated the agenda with a work ordinance and authorizing resolution for the Teradyne Third Amendment. That goes along with the petitions and developers agreement and the adoption of the PUD. And that just, we updated it with a motion for approval.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented, including the additional items on item number 12 as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian to accept the agenda, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven is the consent agenda, that is item 7.1 through 7.9. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion by Troy, second by Mike to approve the consent agenda as presented, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, we have a presentation this evening. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. I'm Becky Wolf and I'm the president of the Andover Area Chamber of Commerce, 1951 North Andover Road. I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to come, come here this evening to do a quick presentation to you. In your package, you see some data that we've gathered over 2018. It talks about communication as far as social media and also how many phone calls we've received in the office and what we've taken care of there, the increase in membership, all of that. But I also wanted to share with a few things with you as our city leadership that we're doing within the chamber that doesn't really reflect on that data sheet that's there. In 2018, we started, it's an event, but it's, it's called the Chamber Coffee. And that has been a huge, huge success, not only for the chamber, but for the businesses that hold that Chamber Coffee. We have 25 to 50 people that attend that each month. We've had upwards of 50 people at some of them, it's really great. We do some networking. We also are able to allow the people present to talk a little bit about their business. So it's really, it's really a great event and, and going gangbusters, we're already booked through April of this year. And at the end of 2017, we started a small business startup guide. This is basically for entrepreneurs who are wanting to start a business in the area. And with that, it's a, it's a one-stop shop. It provides all the information that anybody would ever, ever want to know about starting a business. Who to contact at the city, who to contact at the state, who to contact at the federal level, all of that. And this year, or 2018, we were able to give out about 17 of those. So, and it's not only just for startups, it's also a business resource as well. Which is really exciting for, for our committee that put that together. That includes Jenny and Mark as well, so thank you guys very much. We began featuring a business of the month, or business of the week actually, and started doing videos. We just draw the business out of a hat and that's how they're selected. And we contact them and we go to their place of business and actually do a real short video that they can highlight their, their business. So it gives us the opportunity to promote the business community. We were also recognized by the Wichita Business Journal, gave us accolades for one of the fastest-growing chambers of commerce in the state last year. So we're really excited, I think we were number three, so really excited about that. The board and committees have evaluated the chamber events that we do. Fundraising is one of those necessary things that any nonprofit has to do. And, and that's why we hold events, is to raise funds for the chamber. We did decide not to do the golf tournament this year in 2019. It's just been steadily decreasing in the amount of teams that are coming and then the sponsorship. So we're going to hold off at least for a year and see if the momentum starts coming back for that. We're excited about 2019 and I do want to thank all of our 15 board members. Troy, thank you very much for serving on the board. And also the 30-plus volunteers that serve on the committees that keep the chamber going. And we really appreciate that. Thank you all for your support and if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
I just think you're doing a wonderful job at, at the chamber, keep up the good work.
Thanks Clark, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks Becky. All right, we'll move on to item number nine, which is the health and dental insurance renewal.
Hi everybody, my name is Vanessa Keith and I work with IMA. We're the benefits broker for the city of Andover's employee benefits program. I am here tonight to give you an overview of the medical and dental renewal as long, as well as the ancillary package. I have everything for renewal this year to present today. Everything I talk about tonight will take effect on March 1st of 2019. I'll go ahead and start with the medical. This year we received a very favorable offer from Blue Cross Blue Shield. They provided a 1% decrease in overall rates. So it's actually 1% lower than what we're paying right now in premiums overall. We hadn't performed a market due diligence checking just to make sure your offer is still financially stable in the market. So we did so this year even with the positive renewal. Aetna and United Healthcare both declined to quote because of non-competitive rates, meaning they couldn't even meet the financial offer from Blue Cross Blue Shield this year. We also approached carriers and TPAs for self-funded options, partially self-funded options. We received an ASO option from Blue Cross Blue Shield. We also received a partially self-funded option through the Kansas Medical Center captive arrangement. Again, those offers didn't make sense from a financial perspective in comparison to Blue Cross Blue Shield's offer this year. However, the city's population's utilization ran really, really well. So we wanted to ensure that we could get the deepest discount possible this year. So we were able to negotiate an additional 2% off of that renewal, bringing the final renewal action down to a 3% decrease. Decreases are very rare in the insurance markets, we're excited to give that, the city that savings this year. It equates to around, it will equate to about $32,900 depending on enrollment fluctuations this year. So it's nice to be able to present a savings because last year I wasn't able to. The motion is to renew this year with Blue Cross Blue Shield because of that savings. On dental, Blue Cross Blue Shield is the current carrier, they did offer a 3.5% increase overall. Again, we did a market due diligence, we marketed to Delta Dental and Delta Dental did quote. There were some plan changes to that plan, it wasn't exactly the same as the plan currently being offered. So we utilized that market competition to negotiate the renewal down to an overall increase of 2.5%, which annually is less than $5,000. So the recommendation is to renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the dental. That will allow the employees to continue to have the same network, same plan that they're happy with, as well as the one card for medical and dental with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Life and disability, Lincoln Financial is your life and disability carrier for the employees here at the city. This year was the end of our rate guarantee, we've been in our rate guarantee with them since March 1st of 2017. We received an overall increase on the group life and ADND of 13.8%. An increase on the long-term disability of 15% and an increase on the short-term disability of 15%. We did a market due diligence on these products as well. We received competitive quotes from Principal and the Standard. We were able to utilize those competitive quotes to bring your renewal down to a rate neutral pass, meaning no rate increase whatsoever with a rate guarantee until March 1st of 2021. So no rate increase this year on Lincoln Financial. The voluntary life was always a rate guarantee, always a rate pass with a rate guarantee until March 1st of 2021. So the recommendation is to keep that package where it is with Lincoln Financial because the market could not compete financially after we were able to get that rate pass with Lincoln Financial. The vision plan received a rate pass, everyone is still very happy with the vision plan through, as of right now. So the recommendation is to renew the vision plan where it is. Short-term disability for police and fire, this plan renews at a different time. It actually renews on 6/1 every, every two years. But we did market to see if we could get a package deal with the police and fire and the regular population. Everyone declined to quote on the police and fire business, it's really hard to place disability on police and fire unfortunately because they put their lives on the line every day. So we did already market that, we will receive the renewal this year in March and we will do an additional check at that point to see if there's any additional interest in the market. Flexible spinning account and Cobra administration. Currently, both these products are with Discovery Benefits. There's been quite a bit of member noise, as well as the Human Resource Benefits Team unhappy with the service being provided. So we did market those products this year. Recommendation is to actually change vendors this year from Discovery Benefits to New Synergy. New Synergy has a plethora of great member tools, whether it be apps on the phone or website, as well as great service for the team here internally for administration. They get a one, an actual assigned service person, which is a big deal on these types of accounts. So the recommendation is to actually move from Discovery Benefit to New Synergy. That also reduces the cost by about $100, but still reduction in costs too. So recommendation is to move the flexible spinning account and the Cobra Administration to New Synergy this year. Health and risk, wellness and risk management, you have a 5% tobacco surcharge in place right now. So if the members are tobacco users, they will pay a little bit more in premium costs for the plans. That is because smoking and tobacco use is directly related to overall health, it's been proven. So that is recommended to continue throughout the next year. Overall, my, our recommendations are as I've outlined already, do you have any questions for me?
No, but I would like to say thank you, that was a very comprehensive review and the speed with which it was delivered was phenomenal and you never tripped over a word.
Oh, thank you. Speed is never something I have a problem with. I'll talk slower next year.
It's not necessary, we appreciate that, but I just had to laugh, I'm like wow, you are a speed speaker.
All right, any other questions?
I believe so, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Troy.
I motion to approve the insurance renewals with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas, presented and authorized the mayor to sign such agreements.
Second it.
All right, motion by Troy, second by Mike to approve the health and dental insurance renewals as presented, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, vacation case VA 2018-06. What else what we're looking at?
I'm at a disadvantage, my iPad won't let me on the network, but I can wing it.
Okay.
This is, this is a pretty simple vacation case in a rear yard, the owner wants to build a swimming pool. This particular lot has a rather large 30-foot utility easement that's both for utilities and drainage. The planning commission heard this at their last meeting, the utility companies made their comments and they recommended that the vacation of the north 11 feet of this easement be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve vacation of a portion of the platted 30-foot rear yard utility and drainage easement generally, generally located at 617 West Point Court, Andover, Kansas, as requested and recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
All right, motion by Greg, second by Caroline to approve the vacation as presented, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, Flynn Hills National Sixth Phase.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah.
This is the sixth and final phase of the Flynn Hills development, completes the loop around the golf course. It connects the fifth addition to the first addition so that a person could traverse all the way from the entry off of 120th Street interior in the development over to its connection at Andover Road. Planning Commission has approved the plat and we're asking that the governing body accept the dedications thereon. Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the dedications for the Flynn Hills National Edition Sixth Phase Final Plan, Unit Development Plan as approved by the planning commission.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian to accept the dedications as presented, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So you have the corresponding developers agreement?
Developers agreement that just sets out that relationship as it relates to the public improvements. Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the developers agreement for the Flynn Hills National Edition Phase Six.
Second.
Just real quickly, I want to say the council, the council president could amend his motion to say, in satisfying our letters of credit requirements with the city attorney. They submitted one, there are just a few small words that need to be altered. So I just want to have that in the motion to make sure we can, we confirm that.
I just don't think we can do that.
Would you like to amend your first?
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion by CR, amended motion and amended second by Troy to approve the developers agreement for the Flynn Hills National Edition Phase Six, subject to minor corrections to the letter of credit, as to be approved by our city attorney. How's that? Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now you have the sanitary sewer and water petitions in front of you, also for Flynn Hills National Sixth. Is there a motion to approve those?
So move.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian to approve the petition for public improvements, including sanitary sewer and water for the Flynn Hills National Edition Sixth Phase, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, resolution of advisability.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the resolution of advisability related to the water and sanitary sewer improvements for Flynn Hills National Phase Six as presented and authorize the method of assessment for such benefit district financing of said improvements.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Troy to approve the resolution of advisability as presented, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Lastly, the work ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the ordinance authorizing the construction of improvements of Flynn Hills National Phase Six, further authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bonds and temporary notes for the purpose of financing such improvements.
Second it.
Motion by CR, second by Mike to approve the work ordinance as presented, further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and you got your hat-trick for this evening, CR. Congratulations. I'm going to step down on item 12 due to a personal conflict of interest.
Item. What should we do? Item number 12, Teradyne Estates Third Subdivision, Developers Agreement. Mr. Magnus, do you want to kind of explain what in the world this is, what this is?
You remember a few meetings back when the Teradyne Estates Third Final Plat was accepted? The owner at that time posted a letter of credit to guarantee the installation of the sanitary sewer, which is the only required public improvement for these two lots in this plat. Since that time, the property has changed hands. The now owner wishes to use a special benefit district and petition for that sanitary sewer project. And this developers agreement kind of sets out the terms for that agreement.
And you, you have reviewed the developers agreement and everything looks fair and reasonable?
Yes.
All right. Item, yes.
Do you need a motion?
Why don't you go right ahead there Greg.
Mr. President, I move to approve the developers agreement between the city of Andover, Kansas, and Inventive Investments LLC for development related to the Teradyne Estates Third Edition amended PUD and authorize the council president to sign such agreement.
Second.
We have a motion, a second by Brian to approve the developers agreement as presented, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.2, sanitary sewer petition.
This petition just simply forms that benefit district to finance that sanitary sewer project and all of the costs for that project to be assessed against the two lots in the subdivision.
Very good.
Mr. President, I move to approve the petition for sanitary sewer improvements for Teradyne Estates Third Edition amended PUD and authorize the council president to sign such petition.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second by Troy, motion by Greg to approve the petition for sanitary sewer improvements for Teradyne Estates Third Edition, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.3, resolution of advisability. I assume this is the same last two items that we had in the previous Flynn Hills.
Mr. President, I move to adopt a resolution of advisability related to sanitary sewer improvements for Teradyne Third Edition and further authorize the method of assessment for such benefit district financing set improvements.
We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Troy to adopt a resolution of advisability as presented, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.4, the work ordinance. Yes.
May I ask a question here?
I hope not.
This is staff. The 12.3 doesn't show up. We all know that we're having some issues here, but I keep going back and forth and it'll blank out on me and then I have to close it down and reopen it. But if that was an update that was put in, and Greg has it on his, I'm just saying it isn't showing on mine and.
Not on my ear.
I think that we have something we need to do to your laptop or iPads that has not been done, which is to remove the program and add the program back on again.
Okay.
That may be what the problem is, but if you go to your email and click on the link, it shows that it was sending an update. Well, that's actually the one I just reused to get it.
I think we're going to have to admit that we've gave, have given you the two junior iPads.
That's probably the thing. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that and I can stay later or whatever, come back.
I do know that you put out an email just before the meeting.
Right, I saw that and I did all the things it said and I cleared it up and it's back.
I didn't understand it as well, but mine's coming out.
And I did figure out somewhere where sometimes when you're seeing, or at least it is on the computer, you go there and the screen looks blank. The screen is really not blank, you have to scroll over. And the reason it's like that is because the very first page is eight and a half by 11 and somewhere down the line in that item, what's following is possibly a plaque or something that's big and it moves it all to the, to the right of the screen. That could be part of the problem, but yeah.
Moving on to 12.4, work ordinance. Have we, have you prepared?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing construction of improvements in Teradyne Third Edition, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and temporary notes for the purpose of financing such improvements.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Greg and a second by Troy to adopt an ordinance authorizing the construction of improvements of Teradyne Third Edition and the issuance of general obligation bonds and temporary notes for the purpose of financing such improvements, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on to item number 13.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 13, AFR Headquarters.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, as a reminder, in June of 2018, we were having a discussion about the space issues at your fire station, actually the lack of spaces, space issue at your fire station. And in June, we selected GLMV as an architect to give us some options on what we can do to alleviate those space concerns. We were presented some options in October of 18 at a workshop and we were given the direction at that time from this council to research further options and bring those options back to you. This contract would allow us to continue to work with GLMV to bring you those options. It's for a one-time amendment of $20,000 to the original contract and it would be paid for 50% from admin reserve and 50% from fire reserve. What questions do you have for me?
I assume this is necessary?
Certainly, yes, very much so.
What are the options going to be expanding northward, right?
That's exactly.
Have we had any discussion, I guess, I guess we can get into that, but.
So we hadn't really looked at much expansion to the north. So this is really taking a better look at that before I would bring you anything else.
Right, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the amendment to the contract with GLMV Architecture for $20,000 and authorize the mayor to sign such an agreement.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian to approve the amendment to the contract with GLMV for 20 grand, further discussion.
Just some clarification on, it's almost double what we were originally expecting. So what was the problem that they ran into that we needed to double the price?
I, when I walked away from the October meeting, I felt like the direction that was given to us was primarily driving this, what would it look like if we expanded to the north? And we didn't really look at that, we really looked at the current footprint when we brought you those options in October. So I think that was the big driver of further expense.
It's a total redraw.
It is.
Further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, US 54 and 400 sewer crossing.
You remember a few months ago, we had an agreement with leased properties for the development of Yorktown Road and, and the dedication of some US 54 right of way. One of our obligations in that agreement was to extend sewer across Highway 50. One of our obligations in that agreement was to extend sewer across Highway fifty-four from the Marketplace Edition to serve the future lease development. This contract is with MKEC, who is the developers engineer, to design that sewer crossing. We're satisfied with the proposal, but the city attorney has some issues with the contract that I think he can go into the details.
The city used a standard short form of EJCDC contract, which sets the terms and provisions and actually assists in the attorney's review so they don't have to review the contract. In this particular case, on the attachment, the Exhibit A that describes the scope of services, the engineer has, uh, included, uh, the word estimated on their fee and has included terms and conditions to their form contract, which are not acceptable to the city. Because they presented it that way, we need them to remove those, uh, terms from their Exhibit A and then the contract will be acceptable, so if you'll, if you'll just simply approve it, subject to, to my approval, that's the corrections we'll need to make.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the MKEC proposal for preliminary and construction engineering for US fifty-four slash four hundred sanitary sewer crossing to serve the leased property. I'm at, I assume in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand four eighty and further subject to the approval of our city attorney.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian to approve the proposal, um, with, uh, for not to exceed twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, subject to, um, city council, uh, excuse me, city attorney final approval regarding contractual language. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this one, I guess, note, um, probably already known, but just it came to my mind when I was reading this and it said, uh, since, uh, this will probably be, the highway will completely be redone when the corridor comes through, just to make sure that we take into account where and how the road might be changed when it comes through and don't have to do it twice, meaning put in the sewer in one way today and then ten to twenty years or whenever it happens, have to do it all over again in the future. But again, I'm sure you guys already knew that, but just came to my mind, so I thought I'd...
You know, that's an excellent idea. Why, why would they ever not do it again? No, that's kinda, kinda a joke.
Anytime is possible. That's all.
Further questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, code of the city of Andover.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this amendment to our current ordinance regulating right-of-ways is specifically related to burial of and undergrounding of utilities. I think the city attorney, the public works director, myself would agree that this isn't the final product that we necessarily want the councils to adopt on this issue. Obviously, we've talked about previously that small tell, small cell antenna apparatus is going to be an issue coming forth and the firms who are going to put forth those designs would like to utilize our right-of-way and have some right through state law and the FCC regulations. But we at least wanna take the position that, uh, we're gonna ask that these things continue to be, uh, buried. I think we can come up with a little bit more specific ordinance in the future. There has been some discussion that we need to get some type of ordinance and regulation adopted before January fifteenth to comply with FCC regulations. We've had kinda different interpretations, rather the safest thing is to do this right now with the promise that we'll come back and try to shore this up. Les has been looking at some, uh, regulations adopted by the city of Denver that work really closely with other regs, but we just don't feel like we have the time to finalize that right now. But we do wanna do something and I think the council was in general agreement that we wanted as much as possible to regulate these items and the eight million dollars worth of work, four million of which we paid for burying power lines a couple of years ago, not just be kind of glossed over by a bunch of apparatus for small cell antennas going up and down Andover Road. I think this is a temporary step and we'll continue to work on a, uh, more in-depth procedure, uh, in the future. But I'm certainly willing to have discussion on it, uh, but that is our goal.
Mr. Mayor?
Troy.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance, amending ordinances four sixty, six two one, eight five one, and sixteen fifty-eight regarding city requirements related to the right-of-ways as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Mike to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, two thousand nineteen, council meetings. How many conflicts do we have here?
Well, and I'll certainly let the city clerk, uh, weigh, she's looked at this as, as much as I have, but I guess I want, I wanna, uh, we, we had to deal with this a couple of years ago, but this is, it's a little bit new because our elections have been changed in November. And when it was in April, the new council members and mayor would immediately take office after the election. And now we've got this two-month lag. Now, I don't wanna, you know, I'm kinda gonna convolute a few issues here, but, uh, the normal workshop and council meeting is in November, the week of Thanksgiving. And then you go to the next, next month and you have a council meeting scheduled for New Year's Eve typically. So I at least was wanting the council to take some consideration on maybe having one meeting in November and coming back and doing, and I didn't get this marked on the calendar, a workshop on the ninth and a council meeting on the tenth and then waiting until the first meeting in January when new folks, um, uh, took office. And again, this is partially due to the two-month lag between the election and partially due to just scheduling issues. You know, I would suggest a workshop on November eleventh, or that's Veterans Day. And, you know, I don't think that would probably be, even though we're open, when we wanted to schedule a public meeting.
So, we have a Monday workshop and a Tuesday council meeting the week of Thanksgiving, but that's Monday and Tuesday, Thanksgiving is not till Thursday.
That's, you know...
And you're off, we're closed Friday, closed Thursday and Friday, I presume?
Right.
I don't have a problem with that, I mean, it, you, you anticipate a lot of, um, necessary staff that's gonna be gone that week? That early?
Be it a council member or, um, staff, people do travel that week. That's all, you know, and I don't, I'm sure you guys have gone through this before and, um, it just, for a lot of people, it's sometimes a challenging week to, uh, work with stuff, but I'm, I'm open to keep...
Other question, we only had one, um, meeting in December of this year.
Right, and we didn't do a workshop.
Was that, did that turn out to be an issue?
The biggest issue it is, I think, is for the planning and zoning stuff. That's, and that, you know, that's, that's probably, you know, 'cause if, if you're making somebody wait much beyond, you know, three, four weeks, it becomes a little bit complicated with the statutes and, and that type of thing.
But you're still planning on having your December, uh, Planning Commission meeting on the seventeenth, right?
Right, see, and then we made him, uh, reschedule from a Tuesday to a Wednesday and that's a little bit complicated, you gotta do some announcements and we were trying to avoid that again.
So that's four weeks between PC approval and potentially before it gets to the council.
It's more concerning to me, the November meeting of the Planning Commission.
On the nineteenth?
They would meet on the nineteenth, which then if, if you all meet on...
The tenth.
The tenth, that gives that required fifteen days in between the Planning Commission and the city council to adopt an ordinance if there's a zoning change. So, that would work well.
Mr. Mayor, am I, I guess, speaking for me, but probably the council, I don't think that we should not have a meeting, um, in the interim between when the election happens and when those, uh, when the new board takes place because we're still hired for those two months and it's not really, no such thing as a lame duck, we got a lot of stuff we're working on, so I would just hope that we don't take that into consideration, whether we have meetings or not. I can understand the other part doing with, um, holidays and such, but it's my opinion.
I'm just gonna suggest to you that the other way was better. That you have an election, people made a decision, and I realize the federal government does it and you see all kinds of issues, uh, come from those who are going out the door to those who are coming in the door and it becomes, the state had it right the first time. Now, if you guys are like, that doesn't bother me for two months, we're gonna continue to do...
We're all above, above all that kind of thing, so...
I don't think it makes much difference because we could make a decision in May that they might not agree with and, you know, and council...
Are there any other months here that are a conflict, except for December? Yeah, go ahead.
May twenty-seventh.
What is that?
It's Memorial Day.
That's Memorial Day? Okay, let's tackle May first, um...
This year, we moved both meetings because it was a five Tuesday month. And in two thousand nineteen, it's not a five Tuesday month, so we don't have...
Well, well, I'm okay moving the workshop to the twentieth or the thirteenth of May. I'm also okay leaving the Tuesday evening meeting, though, in May.
Sure.
You wanna move to the thirteenth, then, workshop to the thirteenth, I guess?
I think thirteenth, so that we have...
Yeah, thirteenth, yeah, that was better.
What?
Don't overlap on the Planning Commission again.
That's a Monday.
Thirteenth's a Monday. Oh, you have court? Well, we're over there, right?
Yep.
Conflicts?
We could, um...
The twenty-first is your Planning Commission meeting, right?
The Commission is May twenty-first.
Okay, I should be able to get to a calendar here first, it's over there.
You want a copy of what you just gave us?
No.
So I said, we're over there. So, we're okay with, uh, a workshop on the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Over there? And we're okay with the fourteenth and twenty-eighth as council meetings? And you're okay with the twenty-first still being the Planning Commission meeting, right? Everybody's happy?
Yep.
Any other months?
Uh, December thirtieth and thirty-first.
Okay, so December, what we did this year, we just had one December meeting. But I'm telling you, you're gonna go one, two, three, almost five weeks.
January fourteenth of two thousand twenty.
That's five weeks.
What if we had it on the seventeenth?
Planning Commission will be mad at us. That would be two weeks in a row.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that.
Or just have one on the seventeenth.
The seventeenth is the Planning Commission date.
Well, they'll move if we say they move.
Frankly, I'm...
That's easy to say, except...
But, you got publication issues and, well, so do we, but, and we're meeting on the tenth anyways, so, um...
Maybe we make them meet on the tenth and we meet on the sixteenth and seventeenth then.
I don't care, let's go back to November. I'm okay with, uh, Monday and Tuesday, the week of Thanksgiving. Does anybody got a problem with that?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so November's settled, so we're just down to December. I'm also okay with having one meeting in December, like we did this year. But, it's five weeks.
Why don't we move it to the sixteenth and seventeenth?
You can.
Move the Planning Commission to the tenth.
Or skip your workshop and just have a, well, we can't, 'cause court, is court on the sixteenth?
Again, we're in the lodge.
I'm talking about a council meeting on the sixteenth.
We can't have a council meeting on Christmas Eve or, or New Year's Eve.
The sixteenth or the eighteenth.
What do you mean the eighteenth? We're not doing it on the eighteenth. Trust me. I'm just thinking, instead of, you know, we could go three weeks and then three weeks, if you move your council meeting to Monday, the sixteenth. That'd get you reasonably, instead of going five weeks.
Instead of Tuesday, the seventeenth?
Instead of tenth.
Tuesday, the seventeenth is a Planning Commission meeting, if you wanna bump them... That's right, if you wanna bump them, I'm okay with that, but I don't think, I don't think Les is...
Would court me here on the sixteenth, though, just court me?
That's what I, that's the question I asked. It's, we can't bump court. It should be the sixteenth.
Be the third Monday of the month, I think.
That's the sixteenth.
Yeah, I believe they...
I'll see y'all on New Year's Eve then.
What? What about meeting on the twenty-third?
Everybody's like, no, you won't see me. What day?
Twenty-third.
Okay, how about, yeah, how about the twenty-third? We might get some trial...
Can we have, can we have planning and, and council both on the seventeenth?
But then...
One at five and one at seven?
It's on the first Tuesday, Les.
We'd have to go first.
Just a, just an offer on, offer an alternative, you could move the January twenty-twenty meeting to January seventh.
So there's not five weeks?
Right.
So there's not five weeks, you, you do also control the calendar for the next year.
I don't. Okay, so, leave it on the tenth, move up January twenty-twenty to the seventh, is what you're saying? So that's one, two, three, four weeks instead of five?
I wouldn't be so mad, that's pretty much what we did this year.
It is. Uh, just the five-week thing was bothering me, that's too long.
So we didn't really need to workshop in the second council meeting in December?
Right, so December, we're just gonna do the tenth and that's it.
The workshop?
The workshop.
Meeting on the tenth, meeting then on January the seventh.
Moving twenty-twenty to January seventh.
Staff just is gonna have to be aware of, they've got to be ready for the week before New Year's.
You will want to advise, um, folks that are, have business in front of the city, just like you did this year, that there's gonna be a larger-than-normal lapse.
I would really like to, to bring this back at the next council meeting with the noted what we're doing, the actual approval of the calendar.
Go for it.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe you can, you can put twenty, a little, January of twenty-twenty on there, too. Not that it matters, but, okay. Moving on, item seventeen.
Appears that we need an executive session.
No, sorry, uh, appears that we need an executive session, uh, regarding, uh, discussion relating to acquisition of real property, approximately fifteen minutes. Uh, this is pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B, subsection six, to include the governing body, the city administrator, the public works director, and of course, the city attorney.
I think we could do this in five minutes.
Five minutes.
Um, okay, ten.
Five, let's do it, let's do it five.
Should be able to do that in five minutes.
Second.
Okay, so motion by CR?
Second.
Second by Mike to go on executive session, uh, for the discussion relating to the acquisition of real property pursuant to Kansas State Statute seventy-five forty-three nineteen B, subsection six, to include the governing body, the city administrator, public works director, and the city attorney for approximately five minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who's five minutes start? Go.